All right, we'll get the meeting of May 21st started. Eileen, please go put in favor.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 27, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 27, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 27, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On May 4, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment due to COVID-19 restrictions. In addition to the live feed on YouTube, this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. And just so that we can make sure we don't get too much background noise or feedback, I'll be controlling everybody from here, muting them and unmuting them as we need them. We're going to leave the board attorney unmuted along with whoever is presenting. Once each presenter is done, we will open the meeting up for questions from the board professionals and the board members. After the entire case has been presented, we will have the chairman open the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comment on the application. And just so you know, there is a little lag, so just give me a minute when I have to mute and unmute everybody. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Roll call, please.
One second. Mr. Bozovic?
Here.
Mr. Durado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here, and my screen is completely frozen. Is anybody else's?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Chief?
Chief Kudrick, I have not heard from. Mr. Nacastro? Mr. Leggio has been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett?
Present.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell is going to be late, so we will let you know when she arrives. And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and military at home and abroad fighting for the COVID-19 epidemic? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, a weakest nation, one nation under our individual wills. With liberty and justice for all. Do we have any more than a minute?
We have no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondents?
I have no correspondence, but I believe Mr. Goan, who is the attorney for MGD Holdings, which is on tonight's agenda, is on the conference, and I believe he wants to address the board about that application. So I don't know if you want to do it now, or you want to wait until you get to applications.
Wait. We can wait now, right?
Hold on one second.
Well, if the Goan asks that I just handle it.
He is connected, though. I don't know if he wants to...
He said he was just going to watch.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know if you could hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I'll just take care of it since I'm here. The, yeah, we were going to proceed tonight with a request for a one-year extension of final site plan approval. My client, the applicant, had a personal emergency. I talked to him at 6:30 tonight. He said he was not going to be able to present, and so I called on before the hearing and just indicated that we'd ask to carry that to the next hearing, if that's okay.
I have no objection. Eileen, are we able to?
Yes, there's only, I believe, one other application on the next hearing.
Okay, sounds great.
And is that June 4?
That is June 4, and that will be a remote meeting as well.
Okay, so the application with MG Holdings, case number SP 805E, will be carried to the board's June 4, 2020 hearing, beginning 7 o'clock. That hearing will also be a remote hearing. All documents, once again, will be available on the township's website for review. No notice is required for this application. My understanding is the applicant did, however, provide one. There will be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any resolutions?
Thanks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
There are no resolutions this evening. There will be resolutions at the next hearing.
Okay. And submission waivers?
There's no submission waivers this evening.
Okay. Without that, with that being said, the next application up is case number SD-2986F, and I will be recusing myself. Mr. Husser? Board is all here.
Just before we do that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nacastro, you're recusing yourself as well, correct?
He does. I thought.
Right, so just for the record, both the chairman and Mr. Nacastro have recused. So Chairman Husser?
All right, this is for case number SD-2986F, K. Hovnanian's Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC, took her a final major subdivision and final major site plan. The application of K. Hovnanian's Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC is applicant and McElwee Family Partnership LP, Lot 97, John McElwee and Joanne McElwee Brown, lots 98.01 and 98.03, as owners seeking final major subdivision and final major site plan approval, and ancillary bulk variance relief to remove all existing site improvements and subdivide the tract into 711 lots for age-restricted single-family dwellings, a clubhouse recreation lot, including a stormwater basin and sanitary pump station facility, an open space lot, also including a stormwater basin, two additional open space lots, and a lot for the private roadways on premises known as Block 183, lots 97, 98.01, and 98.03, addresses 1191 in Jersey State Route 33 and 481 Colts Neck Road. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Got you.
Okay, thank you. As the chair indicated, we're here for final approval. We did notice for this hearing because a new variance was required as a result of drainage improvements that were requested by your in-house engineering department, and we'll describe that variance momentarily. We have two witnesses tonight, Dave Fisher from K. Hovnanian and Tim Lurie from DW Smith. Do you want to swear both in, Ron, or one at a time?
We'll just do them one at a time.
Give me one second.
Okay, so Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
David Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R.
And I see Deputy Mayor O'Donnell signed on.
Yes, good evening.
Hi. Hi, Mr. Fisher.
I'll mark the record accordingly. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Fisher, first, describe to the board what your position is with K. Hovnanian.
Yes, I am vice president of Governmental Affairs and a land use planner with the company. I've been with the company combined 27 years, and I handled this application at the time of preliminary subdivision approval from the board last year.
Would you update the board on what has occurred since the preliminary approval was granted?
Sure. As a result of, I would say, the major activity was to finalize a stormwater discharge that was added to the plan as part of our preliminary approval, which was part of the bypass drainage system we designed as a result of discussions with the township. So we amended our DEP permit, or wetlands permit, which was already issued at that time, as well as our Freehold Soil Conservation District certification, and those plans were submitted. They've been approved by Freehold Soils. And in fact, and Tim Lurie can discuss this in more detail if necessary, the Freehold Soil Conservation District asked us to actually simplify the discharge, so it was modified from its original design to a single outfall, and they approved that, and I think a copy of that is in the board's information that was submitted and made part of the agenda. And the DEP permit is still pending. DEP has been a little bit slow in getting to their permit applications, but we expect that to be approved shortly. So that's been the major activity, as well as finalizing the engineering plans for the pump station and sewer design that we hope will be approved by the township shortly so that we can move that application along.
The board engineers' report lists 14 conditions that were contained within the preliminary resolution of approval, and without going into any detail on those conditions, can you tell the board that they have or will be addressed before perfection of the subdivision?
Yes, we're familiar with all of those conditions. We have no issue with them, and they will be addressed, and some of them already have been, before we present the final plans for the signatures required by the township to file them out.
And one last question for you is, there are two variances that are, there were several variances granted for preliminary approval, but there are two specific variances that are set forth within the professional reports that I believe we are going to eliminate the request. Would you get into detail on both of those so that the board is aware which one to be eliminated?
Sure. If you turn to, if you have, they're actually mentioned in both professional reports from Laura Newman dated March 2, as well as Peter Van De Kooi dated March 13. And on Laura's memo, if you have that, there at the bottom of page 5, and she mentions two variances that were listed on the cover sheet of our engineering plans. However, as I'll explain, neither one is necessary at this point because the first one deals with the sizes of trees within the buffer that surrounds the property, and we have been able to adjust all of the species to at least 10 feet in height for the trees, most of them 10 to 12, some 12 to 14 for evergreens, and a minimum of 2.5 inches in caliber. Now, I know you're a planner. Peter found three magnolia trees on our plans, which should have been increased in size, but were not, and so his report points that out, and we will agree to increase the size of those three magnolia trees so that this variance is no longer necessary. The second one deals with the width of the buffer area, and again, this is not necessary, and I'm not sure why it was placed on the cover sheet in the first place. There were two issues with the buffer. One was, we had certain improvements within the buffer area, especially along the front of the property on Route 33, and that planning variance testimony was provided at preliminary approval by our licensed planner, Allison Coffey, but Coffin, and however, this just deals with the width of the buffer. And the buffer is in 50 feet in width around all of the property that abuts residential development and its landscape, and so there was a question about that simply because I think it was listed on the cover sheet, but it's not a necessary variance for this application.
Thank you. That's all we have of Mr. Fisher, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Fisher from the board?
Hold on one second. Nick? The board members and professionals have been unmuted. So they can go ahead with any questions?
Okay. Hey, Sal?
Yes?
If it's okay, I'd like to comment on just two of the waivers as well, because honestly, I don't think they're necessary. And the first one deals with the height of the streetlights, and I know that initially on our plans it wasn't dimensioned, but it was when we submitted our revised landscape plans. The lighting are part of the landscape plan package, and on sheet L12, the streetlight is dimensioned at 16 feet, so we don't really need a waiver, you know, because it had referenced a height of 12 feet at some point during our application. And that's listed in Peter's planning memo, and I think it's in Laura's as well. It is, on page 6. And then there was a requirement that parking areas be screened with landscaping at least 3 feet in height, and we added that to our landscape plans around all the edges of the parking, where the head-in parking exists, and the plant list does list that species at a minimum of 3 feet in height when planted, so I don't think that waiver is needed either. Unless there's some objection from one of the professionals.
If I could, just on that topic, you also have requested relief in our report, page 6, Item G, Section 188-118, which deals with the minimum ranaway width, but as we noted, we believe this was superseded by the RSI, so I don't believe that you would technically require that relief either, but it was listed on the plans.
It's in our ordinance, so to be, the way I normally handle it is, the relief is granted, you call it preemptive by the RSI.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you about a question with the lighting? Is that going to be installed by the utility company?
We hope to have the utility company install at least the streetlights. We've got LED lights within the clubhouse area and high-pressure sodium streetlights within the streets. We're using an approved, this is a JCPN fixture, and so we try to work that out where the utility company will install. Sometimes in private communities, they just refuse to do that, but that's been our objective.
So often, though, there's always confusion with a 16-foot mounting height. I know they often provide a 16-foot hole, which then gets put in the ground 4 feet, so there's, a lot of times you see confusion with that. The plants say 16 feet, but it really meant 16-foot holes, so I just wanted to just make sure that it is going to be mounted at 16 feet, and it's not a 16-foot hole.
Okay. I'll link over to that. Thank you.
This is Peter Balli. As I said, all my questions were answered, of course, by Mr. Fisher's testimony. Just one question real quickly. Given the current situation, are there any impacts or changes to the phasing plan? Is that still proposed as it is on the plans?
No, that is. Initially, it was six phases, and you're right in your memo, we modified that with a phasing plan with four phases, and that's still the current plan to phase the project in that progression from front to back, or from south to north, and in the phases as shown.
We now like to call Tim Lurie.
One second.
Hi, Sal, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lurie, just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name, Tim Lurie, L-U-R-I-E. I'm a professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Mr., we request that his qualifications be accepted, Mr. Chair.
Yes, accepted.
And, Tim, without getting into a lot of detail, unless the board has questions, I want to just focus you on a few points. First of all, can you describe to the board the drainage improvements that were made as a result of your interaction with the township engineering department?
Sure. Since we received preliminary approval, we met with the township engineer, and we redesigned the drainage along Colts Farm Road. Originally, it was going to an outfall, existing outfall on Route 33. We were able to go through different routings, and we were able to route the stormwater straight across our site to the east to its own outfall, which is, which is parallel to the existing, not the existing, to the other proposed stormwater outfall of the infiltration basin. And as a result of this, we were able to satisfy the flow requirements and the upstream drainage analysis that the township engineer wanted us to complete.
And as a result of those revisions, a variance was triggered. Would you describe that variance, please?
The variance, well, the basin got bigger inside the buffer area, which is, which becomes a variance request, and also with an additional retaining wall to enable us to increase our storage.
In addition, there are several pages of technical comments that are contained within the township professional reports. Would you advise the board whether there are any of those comments that cannot be addressed, and if so, identify them, otherwise agree that you will address them all?
We can address all the comments in the Technical Engineering Review Number 3 memo.
Okay, and then I want to refer you to, it seems that there's one other design waiver that we haven't discussed, and if you refer to Laura Newman's report dated March 2 on page 6, it's item I.
Sure. It's item I regarding the floodplains, repairing, and wetlands, farmland, perimeter, stream, corridor, and conservation easements shall be identified by a monument or marker placed every 75 feet. We're requesting a waiver for that because, as we discussed, a preliminary approval, we would like to follow the DEP regulations on that aspect, which in the DEP regulations and the permit comes under, it's page 4 of the permit, where it says, modified transition area is to be marked by a permanent physical barrier, either retaining wall or noted on approved plans, or some other permanent structure with additional appropriate signage. So we currently have fencing and retaining walls along our perimeter, which we were allowed to utilize that instead of putting monuments every 75 feet.
You mentioned appropriate signage. Does the DEP approve the signage, or is that something that the board's professionals would approve?
No, the DEP does.
Other than those comments, Tim, are the final subdivision and site plans consistent with the preliminary approval, other than changes that have been made to address conditions of the preliminary approval?
Yes, that is correct.
Again, Mr. Chair, that's all we have of Mr. Lurie, other than he's prepared to answer any questions the board or the professionals may have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tim?
One second. The board professionals are all unmuted if they have any questions, and I'll work on the board members in one second. I believe everyone has been unmuted.
Okay. Any questions?
Laura and Peter may not have, they may have some.
I'm unmuted now. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further. The applicant, through direct testimony, has gone through our report, and as long as they agree to the technical attachment and making sure all those prior conditions get addressed, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay. Peter, you have anything?
I've got nothing at this time. Thank you.
So any closing remarks there?
No, that's all we have. Thank you. We appreciate your time, and we request that the board grant the approval. That was the pledge for this evening.
Okay, thank you. I think, Eileen, at this time, we can open it up to the public?
Yes, you can.
Any questions or comments?
The board has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone is listening and needs to ask a question, please call in now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can hear me.
Yes, my name is James Estelle. I'm from 43 Estelle Lane in Howell.
Mr. Estelle, just before you continue, I need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, Mr. Estelle, go ahead.
Yes, reference the application from before, the one that was bumped to June 4, 2020. I was wondering, why is it that no future notice to property owners can go out?
The municipal land use law does not require notice for that type of application, so we can't require it. It's, that's a state statute that governs us.
Okay. What specific kind of application has this restriction?
That application for an extension of time is not required by the municipal land use law.
Oh, okay.
Their original application did, their original application was notice. The extension, it's a state law, we can't make them.
Understood. I'm just, I'm getting background info.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that have questions on K. Hovnanian's Four Seasons at Colts Farm?
Can we give it a minute, Eileen, or is it typically?
I'll leave that to you and Ron.
Yeah, I don't know how long it takes for them to call in.
Well, I mean, we already had one member of the public, so no one else appears to be queued up, so I think it's probably safe now to close it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I have nobody on my screen here.
We'll close public comment, and I guess at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
If it's a motion, it will either be to approve or deny final major subdivision approval, final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Do I have a motion?
Everybody is unmuted. I believe Dave Everett made a motion.
To approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mike Bozovic, second.
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sal.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So, Ron, I'm assuming there's no reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
So do, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Seaman?
I'll second that motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, by me.
Do we need a roll call, or do you just want to take it by?
All in favor?
Have a good evening, Eileen. Thank you very much.
Meeting adjourned, 7:41 PM.